We will now call to order the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Pasadena Area Community College. Ms. Thompson, will you read the roll, call the roll? Here.
Dr. Selvage.
Here.
Dr. Fellow.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hilsman.
Here.
Mr. Martin. Mr. Osterling. Ms. Bahn.
Okay, at this time, the Board will convene to close session. We have one item, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. One item, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Sections 5495, 6.9A, and D1. We'll now call to order the open session for the Board of Trustees of Pasadena Area Community College District. The Board met in closed session, and after conferring a meeting with legal counsel in closed session, the Board approved a settlement agreement with Safeco Insurance Company of America regarding the Center for the Arts Project. The motion was made by Trustee Hilsman and seconded by Trustee Selvage. The vote was unanimous among the trustees present: Wa, Brown, Martin, Selvage, and Hilsman. Trustee Osterling is absent. Okay, may I ask Trustee Hilsman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand. Put your hands over your heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Portugal. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, are there any introductions and recognitions?
No.
Do we have public comment on non-agenda items?
Madam President, I was wrong. We do have one comment this evening from Martin Enriquez under public comment, and you have three minutes.
Happy New Year, Honorable Trustees and assembled individuals. I want to speak about two items. The redistricting report of 2012 and the chimes. Oh, my name is Martin Enriquez. In the name of transparency, this administration has been open to dialogue. President John Quincy Adams, who served with dignity in the House of Representatives for over a score of years, introduced petitions every year to remove the gag order on petitions to abolish slavery. In that vein, I renew my request to have a paper version and an electronic version of the 2012 redistricting, just as I requested in November of 2011, 2012, 2015, and now 2016. Now, moving on, I love the chimes, the vibrations make me joyous, and it is shared by everything. I'm glad you are fine-tuning it. It was splendid last week when I heard it all the way to my house. Thank you for bringing back the chimes.
Thank you. Okay, assuming everyone has had a chance to read the minutes, may I have a motion to accept the minutes for meeting one, the annual organization meeting and the regular business meeting of December 9th? Motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any corrections? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Meeting number two, the semi-annual retreat, January 16th. May I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have approval of consent items. Are there any items that the trustees wish to pull for further discussion?
Motion to approve the consent items.
Which one?
167B.
So, item 167B will be pulled and postponed, okay. Any other items? Okay, may I have a motion to accept the consent items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Wow, this is going to be a really short meeting. John, I'm going to beat you on, I'm going to beat your time on this.
Twenty-seven minutes.
Actions recommended for approval. So, we have a non-item F, non-resident tuition fee for 2016-17. President Verdiyan?
We are asking the Board to approve the non-resident tuition fee for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. The fee will be $224 for the 2016-2017 fiscal year, and this includes the capital outlay fee.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes. This was considered at the last Budget and Audit Committee meeting, and we went over the figures with the staff, and the committee is recommending approval to the full Board. And there's a page in the agenda package, it's the page after the description and background for information, shows what the non-resident tuition fees are for all the, well, for a number of other districts, and we're pretty much in the pack. One thing, I was going to bring along some figures on the amount of revenue that this generates, but I forgot the figures. I think it's eight or nine million dollars.
That's correct. It's between eight and about nine and a half million dollars annually.
Yeah, so that's a big piece of our budget, and it's money that we can spend on anything. And it's not a big change from last year, so it's pretty close to what it's been last year.
Any further discussion? May I have an advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, authorization to transmit the second quarterly financial status report, item G, Superintendent?
It is recommended that the Board of Trustees authorize the transmission of the second quarterly financial report to the Chancellor's Office, as required by EB 2910.
Motion to approve.
Second? May I have a second?
I'll second. Aye.
Okay, advisors. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item H, approval of sabbatical leaves, Superintendent President?
We are recommending to the Board the 13 requests that were approved by the internal process of the college, out of 17 requests that the college received. And four of the requests were deemed incomplete, and so therefore we are bringing to you the 13 requests for approval. And this falls within the maximum number of 4% of full-time regular or contract positions in the unit for sabbatical leave.
Madam President, I want to say I am very pleased, and I think the projects are very outstanding, the faculty is doing, and I'd like to move approval.
Second.
I agree with you, Dr. Fellow. May I have the advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I might add, there were some really great questions from the trustees, and I really appreciate you getting all your questions in early. I think it helped us all. Item I, nomination, California Community College Trustees, Triple CT, for the Triple CT Board of Trustees. May I have a motion to?
I would like to nominate Linda Wa.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Fellow.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Now the campaigning begins. Okay, item J, Board of Trustees, representatives of committees for the Board of Trustee Representatives. For the community, sorry, did I forget the names? Okay, for the Community College Leave California will be Linda Wa. We have the Los Angeles County Committee, that will be Hoyt Hilsman. Los Angeles County School Trustees Association, Jim Osterling. PCC Foundation, Hoyt Hilsman. PCC Measure P Representative, Linda Wa. Accreditation Board Policy Review, Linda Wa, Berlinda Fellow, oh, no, Berlinda Brown, Tony Fellow, and the student trustee.
I like the boxy twins.
Oh, my gosh, I just married Berlinda and Tony. Sorry, or congratulations.
Mike and Dawn says Berlinda.
That's what I said.
She'd love it.
Budget and Audit, Jim Osterling, John Martin, and Ross Selvage. Ross Selvage to Chair. Did I mention, oh, I did mention that I was going to chair the accreditation. Okay, KPPC Oversight, Hoyt Hilsman, Tony Fellow, and Berlinda Brown. Berlinda Brown to Chair. Legislative Advocacy, Jim Osterling, Hoyt Hilsman, Linda Wa, and Student Trustee. Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Student Advisory?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Actually, not to be technical, but I think you have the right, as the Board Chair, to appoint those.
Oh, okay, so do we need an action?
And I think it's gracious of you, the way you've handled it, and we, of course, could, if we didn't like your appointments, always bring it up to the full Board. But I don't actually think you technically need our approval, but you're the Board Chair, you can do what you want and get it anyway.
I defer to our senior trustees, so thank you, and we will remember that in the next time. All right, information items, Superintendent President's report.
Thank you, Trustee Wa. I would like to begin my report with the most excellent news that Pasadena City College received last week. We have been invited to submit our qualifications for the Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence. Only 150 colleges in the nation are invited to apply for this prestigious prize, and the winning college receives a $1 million award. In the fall semester, 10 colleges will be identified, and we will be submitting our paperwork right now, and that work is being overseen by Dr. Brock Klein, together with the help of Dr. Cynthia Olivo, and Dr. Kathy Scott, and Stephanie Fleming from the Faculty Senate. And our hope is that we will be one of the 10 colleges, and we'll receive a visit from the Aspen Foundation. Early in the spring of 2017, the Aspen Foundation will identify the three finalists, and then there'll be a great gala event at which the Aspen awardee will be named. In a similar vein, our Biology 11 course received statewide recognition by the Chancellor's Office through the Board of Governors. We were one of only two statewide programs to be recognized, and we are proud of the work that Katarina Rodriguez and Susana Iwaniki from our Biology Department prepared and submitted. And Professor Susana Iwaniki was present at the Board of Governors' meeting to accept the award. Last week, President Wa, Trustee Selvage, Trustee Hilsman, and Trustee Bahn, myself and several other college students and administrators were in Sacramento for the legislative weekend. We had a great productive meeting in Sacramento. We met with several representatives of our area. We got to speak with people from the Department of Finance, and we were proud to represent Pasadena City College, and also to share with elected officials and their staff some of the concerns that we have for the coming years. And we do hope that they listen to us, that they heard us, and that Pasadena College will be well represented and will have, is a force to be reckoned with at Sacramento and in the state. This coming week, we will be going to Washington to work at the national level, to lobby our legislators and White House staff, so that Pasadena City College again can be in the limelight and the forefront of innovation and creativity, as we have been doing for more than 90 years. About two weeks ago, together with Trustees Selvage, Osterling, and Brown, I went to the Altadena Town Council meeting to share with them the good things happening at Pasadena City College. To date, I have visited almost every town and city in our district, and I want you to know that Pasadena City College is well-liked by the community. In every single city or town that I've visited, I was able to interact with former graduates, alumni of Pasadena City College, and everybody was very impressed with the work that we are doing. As you know, we are in the third week of our spring semester, and our enrollment is doing very well. We are currently at 90% capacity, and we are at 0.7% higher than we were last spring at about the same time. I want to thank Doctors Scott, Doctor Angerall, as well as all the deans, and our faculty for the work that they have been doing to prepare a schedule that is efficient and effective, and at the same time is allowing us to have an enrollment that is slightly higher than it was last spring. When we look at other colleges in the state, most colleges are flat or lower than they were spring of last year at the same time. Our fall enrollment was excellent. We were up by 4.7%, and that provided us with a growth of more than 3% in full-time equivalent students. As you know, since we're talking about enrollment, up to about last year, our enrollment indicated that roughly 25% of our students were within the Pasadena Area Community College District. We are looking at the latest numbers right now, and we are verifying the data to make sure that they are correct, and we are almost certain they are correct, but we are still, we want to verify that. Our latest indication is that as of this spring semester, 56.7% of our students live within the Pasadena Area Community College District. What we are noticing is that when students apply, their home address is outside our district, but after they apply and they register for classes, those addresses are switching to in-district addresses. We're going to look at the numbers, and hopefully at the next Board meeting, we'll give you a presentation to show you where our students are coming from at this point in time. Our efforts are well underway to hire 50 new full-time faculty members, five deans, one assistant vice president, one assistant superintendent, vice president for instruction, and one vice president for human resources. Last week, I want to thank our faculty and our staff. Last Saturday, we were well-represented at the Job Fair at the LAX Hilton, and we were really impressed by the number of qualified candidates who visited our booths. This coming Saturday, there is an African-American Job Fair in Los Angeles at the LA Convention Center, and Pasadena City College will be well-represented there, and I will be attending also for part of the day. Our Biology Technology Program received a $3 million grant from the California Institute for Regenerative Medicine for its Bridges Program, which provides up to 10 biotech students each year with opportunities in research, education, and training. And Pasadena City College has done very well in that area, and I want to recognize the work done by Dr. Dave Douglas and his faculty and staff in the obtention of this grant. I also want to recognize our students from the Welding Department, under the direction of our new faculty member, Misty Henry. Since late last year, Misty has been working tirelessly with our students to prepare them for the Skills USA Series of Competitions. And this January 23rd, they had an unprecedented success at the regional level. Our students earned six gold, five silver, and two bronze medals, and this means that 11 of our students will be going to compete in San Diego for the state level. I must say, I am proud of the work that our students are doing, and also of the enthusiasm displayed by our faculty and staff in getting our students ready, not only for degrees and transfers, but also for the workforce. Continuing in the same vein, two of our art professors are featured in major exhibits at the local art museums. Professor Rebecca Morris has a piece included in this year's LA Biennial Exhibition. At the Hammer Museum, and sculptor Keiko Fukazawa's solo show, made in China, is on until May at the Craft and Folk Art Museum. And not to forget our Athletics Department, we had a fantastic turnout for the Hall of Fame induction ceremony on January 24th. More than 200 people were in attendance, and I was very proud of all the folks we inducted in the Hall of Fame, from the national champion 1938 football team to softball star Gina Punaro. I want to conclude my remarks by reading a letter received by an alumnus of ours, Ryan Liu. You all know of him. He was here last year, he graduated from the college last May, and he's now at Yale University. And he shared a letter with us, and I'm going to read this letter to you. Dear Ryan, thank you for sharing your story with me. I was struck by the way your experiences in community college and your family's sacrifices to put opportunity within your reach have motivated you to lift up the lives of others and expand access to education. I am committed to making college more accessible than ever before, and letters like yours remind me of the importance of that goal. My administration launched America's College Promise, an initiative centered on the belief that anyone with drive and discipline, at any age and from any walk of life, should be able to earn the skills necessary to compete and thrive in the 21st century economy. I hear your call to action, and I'll keep working to ensure students have every chance to go as far as their hard work and talents will take them. Again, thank you for writing to me. Passionate young people like you give me great hope for the future, and I trust you'll hold on to the optimism and determination that have brought you this far. As you continue your educational journey from Pasadena to New Haven, know that I'm proud of you and wish you and your family the very best. Sincerely, Barack Obama. Our students are doing very well, and all I can say to our faculty, our staff, and our Board, and our administration, thank you for providing that level of support that you give our students. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Verdiyan. I know we're all very proud of Ryan Liu, and for those of us who knew him, he was our valedictorian last year, so, and he received his letter from Yale on the day of commencement, so it was really a proud moment for all of us, and especially for Ryan and his family. Okay, we will go on to announcements by the Shared Governance Representatives and the Board of Trustees. Let us start with the Classified Senate.
We have no reports this evening.
Thank you. Management Association, Mr. Futter.
Yeah, and I overheard that we're looking for a record tonight, so I'll make it as brief as possible. On the behalf of the Pasadena City College Management Association, I'm pleased to inform the trustees that members of the MA Board have participated in and continue to fulfill their governance roles as members of one or more of the college's Accreditation Task Force Committees, each of which is charged with addressing specific recommendations from the ACCJC. While we recognize the challenges, we are confident this undertaking will result in a favorable outcome for Pasadena City College. As President of the Management Association, I congratulate all those individuals, management, classified, and faculty, who have acknowledged their responsibility and who have made this commitment.
Thank you, Mr. Futter. Gosh, am I going to make this? Okay, Academic Senate?
My guys, all up to me.
And you don't, Jay, you don't look like Dr. Valerie Foster's Jay Cho.
She couldn't make it today, so I'm Valerie today. We have actually one announcement. We're going to have a fun event next Thursday, right before we go away for the long weekend. We're going to have a Valentine Day mixer/funderraiser event, so of course, all the trustees are welcome to attend. It's from 11:30 to 1:30 here. We're going to have auctions, we're going to have fundraiser events, we're going to have fun activities, and we're going to have a bunch of baskets made by faculties, and we're going to sell it as auction, and the money will go to either student scholarship or we're going to create, we're going to create a new fund for low-income students. So, please, please attend if it's possible. Next Thursday, 11:30 here.
Thank you. Okay, let's have reports from our trustee, so let's start with Student Trustee Bahn.
First of all, President Morales apologizes for not being able to make it here tonight. I have been working with President Morales to add information from a student's perspective, what students need and what we are lacking. Most recently, I've attended a planning and priority standing committee to represent students, as there are still several spots empty. I attended the Board of Tree last month, as well as the Associated Students Board of Tree, in which we established a clear timeline of event from now to the end of the semester to better serve students in addition, in addition of re-establishing our norms and goals. Over the weekend, I and three other students, President Morales, Lincoln Burgess, and Ricardo Patlin, attended the annual CCLC Conference, which, as stated in President Verdiyan's report, was productive and constructive, and a valuable experience in preparation for the Legislative Summit I will be attending next week in Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bahn. Trustee Brown?
Yeah, so I am just happy to be back. It seems like we've been gone for a long time, but good, we're back. I just wanted to report that I have been attending several accreditation work group, ethics and shared governance, and I think they're going very well. There's a lot of hard-working people there, and we're really focusing on getting these reports together, and soon, so it's been going very well, and I'm so delighted that I'm part of it. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Trustee Hilsman?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the staff and the Board for all the support here for me in the last two months, and the steep learning curve that I've been going through, enjoying it very much. And also thank you for a very productive weekend in Sacramento. I'm looking forward to the DC.
Thank you, Trustee Hilsman. Trustee Selvage?
I think we've blown past the record, haven't we?
It was because Raj read that letter from the President.
So, don't blame me. Just two things. One, what was the first one? Oh, yes. I want to comment on the Hall of Fame induction that I attended along with Dr. Verdiyan. I think it's the fourth one that I've been to, and when you sit there and hear the six or eight inductees into the Hall of Fame, you really get an appreciation for the extent to which these athletes who are, who reach the top of their chosen field of competition are almost invariably also high achievers in other aspects of their life. And there's no accident, it's not a fluke, that they are the high achievers and merit induction into the Athletic Hall of Fame, but they're also really sound contributors to their community in a whole manner of ways, but we need to remember that their success is in large part due to the help they get from their coaches and the staff here at PCC. When I was on the gymnastics team here, that was a large factor in whatever success I had. And my coach, when I was here in the 1960s, was at that meeting. He's 84 years old, Jerry Todd, and remarkable man, makes a big contribution. The other thing is that I will be making a report at the next meeting, a brief report on... on the Budget and Audit Committee meeting. That's it, ladies.
Thank you, Trustee Selvage. Trustee Fellow?
Thank you. I have just two items that I would like to talk about tonight, and begin by saying, you know, this is a very scary world, and colleges are not immune to terrorist threats. I've had to deal with this at Cal State Fullerton with gunmen on campus a number of times. And I think it's the, Cal State Fullerton's been, probably had more than most universities because it is the largest university in California. But this weekend, I attended a independent cities conference that focused on the terrorist threat in San Bernardino, and the police and the doctors who were there talked about, they even talked about Cal State Fullerton and some of the incidents we've had there. But I have a question, and it probably is being done, but, and they brought it up also at this conference. The faculty, are they trained in what to do in the classroom if there is a terrorist
We are, what we have every semester, we do drills. Last fall, for the first time, we had an active shooter drill on, uh, no, it was earthquake drill, but we will be having the active shooter drill this coming, this spring. We're having an active shooter drill on campus. We are also working with our chief of police and administration, and we will be extending that to faculty and staff as well, on doing a tabletop exercise on how we are going to activate our very own emergency center at the college should anything happen. And we do have on our website specific information on the various steps we need to be taking if we have anything like that on campus.
Wonderful. Okay. Good. It's just a, it's just a problem that, it's just gonna get worse and worse, I'm afraid to say. The other thing I'd like to ask this evening is if we adjourn in memory of Anthony and James Lynn, who were murdered in Arcadia. They were Arcadia High School students, who probably were going to come to PCC on January 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fellow. Trustee Martin?
No report, thank you.
Okay, well, I wasn't gonna make the timeline anyway. So I do want to thank all of the board members who were present for the February, for the Board Retreat. I think that we got some really great comments back, and a lot of us came back with great ideas on how we could operate more effectively as a board. So the Executive Board and I met yesterday, and we identified some things that are, and the notes are in your packets. So all of the comments were taken very seriously. We all thought that they all contributed, and these are the ones that we thought that we could probably best work on with the president to move forward more effectively. So they broke into Board Procedures Protocols, Reports for Information, and Training, and then, of course, we looked at the digital board packages. So if you feel that we missed anything, please let me know, and we're happy to bring it back for discussion. I do want to report on the, um, the League, the CCLC. So we were up in Sacramento, and I do want to thank the outstanding students that we had with us, and I think all of the legislators were quite impressed with what they had to say. And I also wanted to thank the administration and Alex Bucklehide, who I think had to just take this on really ad hoc and did a great job. So I think the legislators got great information. At the League where there were a number of, during the conferences, there were a number of things that were, I think, pretty prominent. So I think all across the community colleges, the report from, on the status of ACCJC is quite, is on everybody's mind. The Chancellor's Office has asked the, asked the Subcommittee to, well, actually, the Board of Governors asked the Chancellor's Office to have a report recommending both a timeline and a transition period. And so they had reported out that they expect the transition to be completed within six years, and all colleges will be moving over, and they are now in the process of seeking an alternate accreditor. I know more information will be coming, that's, but this is what was reported out through the League meetings and through the trustees. Lot of information on the workforce, and in fact, we will be having a workforce presentation through Laxta here on April 25th, and so I hope everyone will come. The Young Invincibles will be speaking, which is the youth demographic that is most affected, of course, by the jobs and the, and the industries in our, in our region. And of the Chancellor's Office, Vice Chancellor Tom Quinnlevin, who heads the Workforce Task Force, has just hired a new dean, and so he will be one of the co-presenters. Some of the other information that came out regarding workforce, and these are things that we advocated for, were thanking the governor, who made it a priority for workforce and allocated the 200 million. And so I will be writing a newsletter to all of the colleges and all the trustees, calling them, to, to be monitoring and reviewing what their colleges, if their colleges are moving forward on this. So we are asking all colleges, if you want a presentation on workforce, that your superintendent contact the Chancellor's Office, that can be done. So PCC is ahead on that, and I think we will also be doing one regionally. So I've talked to Dr. Verdiann, and Dr. Viar from Glendale, I think, has headed, heads Sanfac, so we'll be calling for a regional presentation. There is a, the Chancellor's Office is offering $50,000 to install the Launchboard 2.0, which will be the tool that they expect to utilize to collect all of the data on how we are moving the needle in workforce. And the first six months, they will come, they will offer resources for training, and then they will come in and help us install the, provide consultative services to install the software. So, other events to support. The, on February 29th, Laxta will be having a CVRA Senate Bill 450 presentation, since Trustee Hilsman is there as our representative, I hope he will come, but I invite all trustees to come. So this is an extremely important topic. CVRA is about, it's mainly, the K-12s are being put on notice that they will have to answer on the subdistrikting issues, when all of the community colleges, most of us have already subdistricted, but many K-12s have not. So this is information regarding the Voting Rights Act. Senate Bill 450 was initiated by Senator Ben Allen, who was a former Laxta director, and this is, changes the cycle of elections to move all elections to November, starting 2017. So hopefully, everyone will come for that. So it's not only the trustees are invited, but all administrators from districts who are members. And that will be in Downey. And then, as I said, on April 25th, we will have the Strong Workforce Meeting here at PCC, and all Laxta members and K-12s, community colleges, and any administrators and staff who want to come are invited. And, let's see, and I think that's, oh, and I did want to mention, the President's Asian Americans Advisory will be holding a symposium for students who want to come to PCC. Trustee Vaughn has been very generous in helping get students who will want to come as ambassadors to help us. Tamika Alexander's been doing a great job. And we will be having a really great keynote speaker, Paula Madison, who was the Vice President of Diversity for Universal Studios, and is a, is a person of African-Chinese-Jamaican-American descent. Very interesting speaker, and she, she has several documentaries out on her history. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone a Happy Chinese New Year on February 7th, so it's the Year of the Monkey, so Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Oh, no. Whoa, we're not, we're not gonna adjourn the meeting. Sorry. Erase that last part. We have Item M, Proposed Future Board Meetings. We have regular meetings, except we noticed that there was a meeting on March 26th that was allocated as a study session meeting, and I, none of us were sure what that was. Trustee Brown, no? Okay. So we will be deleting the March 26th, and these are the proposed meetings for future board meetings. Is there any, is everyone okay with that? Everybody okay with the proposed future board meetings?
Well, I cannot be here the 24th, I have to be in Washington, DC.
Okay, so Trustee Fellow will be absent from the February 24th meeting. Okay, are there any proposed future agenda items? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Okay, hearing none. This meeting is now adjourned.